Good evening, everyone in town of Carver. We are the zoning board of appeals and we are meeting in Carver Town Hall Room Number Four. The date is May 21, 2019, and it is just now 7:00 PM, almost on the dot. We have two cases to hear tonight, but before we do, it's my custom to introduce the board members. To my far left is Fran Mello, who comes to us with many years of business administration experience and brings her good common sense in the business aspect to this board. We're happy to have her. She's been with us for many years now. How many, Fran?
Nine.
Nine years. To my immediate left is Eric Mueller, who for many years operated his own septic business in town and now works as a regional manager for a larger septic company. He's our septic expert and his expertise is important to us on all matters. Septic. To my far right, the man who is hair-challenged is Alan Germain. Alan has come to us most recently from the Finance Committee. I think he's a familiar face to many people in the town of Carver, and we are extremely happy to have him. He's our newest board member and has many insights that he's already offered to the board on the few meetings that he has been part of this board for so far. To my immediate right is Sharon Clark, the vice chair, who is the senior member of this board, comes to us with many years of expertise in title questions. She's an ace title searcher herself, and we rely on her heavily with regard to land matters, all land matters. And yours truly, I'm an attorney in the town of Carver for many years. So we're proud to represent the town of Carver on these kinds of cases. The first order of business tonight is addressing the minutes from our last meeting, and we are up to date as a board. We typically approve the previous meeting's minutes at our next meeting, and our most recent meeting was just on April 30. These minutes have been edited and passed to all board members for their review in advance of tonight's meeting so that we don't waste any time. I ask the board members now if they have any issues with these minutes, anything that they'd like to change, modify, amend, correct, pick your adjective. Anything at all? Mr. Germain, you good? I spelled your name right this time?
Yes.
Good. All right. Do I hear a motion to accept these minutes then as written?
Still moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the meeting minutes of April 30 now are part of the official record. That administrative business, piece of business is now done, and we can move to our cases for this evening. There are two, the first of which is a public hearing on case number 1-8. This is a continued public hearing. The petitioner being Thomas J. Caparella, Family Trust, appealing the issuance of a building permit number 2018-425 to demo and reconstruct a single-family residence for property located at 14 Andrews Point Road in Carver, which is at assessor's map 1-lot 8 pursuant to section 5223 of the Carver zoning bylaws. Who do we have here this evening representing the petitioner, the Thomas J. Caparella Family Trust?
Ed Angley.
Mr. Angley, your office address, please.
121 Warren Avenue, Plymouth, Mass., 02360.
Very good. And Mr. Angley, I give you the floor. Before you make your presentation, however, I will note that there is some history to this case with this board. We had a public hearing previously on this board at this level, and it was determined after we examined this more carefully and listened to all the evidence that relief was not required. So there was no decision issued because no zoning relief was deemed to be necessary by this board based upon the evidence that we heard at that time. So I give you the floor and perhaps you can illuminate us.
Thank you. I was unaware of that. I normally like to stand, but I think that if I try to stand until I get tired, I'll fall down. So could I either sit there or sit here?
Why don't you sit there? Just pull the chair out a little bit so we can get you on camera because we don't want to miss your handsome face.
I've known your cameraman for many years.
Very good.
Okay. I have a brief presentation to you. John, with your permission, if I ever hand it in, I have copy for everybody. I also have a copy for opposing counsel presentation. The original. You're welcome.
Thank you.
That's John Caparella handing out the papers. Lisa Zorber is one of the trustees sitting here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I stated, my name's Ed Angley and I'm an attorney out of Plymouth. The matter before the board is the appeal by the trustees of the Thomas J. Caparella Family Trust, owners of the dwelling at 12 Andrews Point Road, of the decision to issue a building permit for construction, reconstruction of a dwelling on property of Merritt Bazanotti at 14 Andrews Point Road. At a previous meeting of the board to consider the issue of whether the building permit could be issued, my clients raised several issues. The board received an opinion from Town Council, which quoted from section 2254 of the zoning bylaw, nonconforming single and two-family residential structures, stated that if none of the existing nonconformities are increased, the building permit may issue. Section 2253, item A, states, "A reconstruction, extension, or structural change of nonconforming structure provided since reconstruction, extension, or change does not increase an existing nonconformity or create a new nonconformity, including not limited to an extension of an exterior wall at or along existing structure. The plan submitted with the building permit application shows an existing dwelling to be razed and a proposed two-bedroom dwelling, which is not within the footprint of the existing structure." The definition of reconstruct further requires that it be as it sits on the lot. In the definition of reconstruction, there's a semicolon following existing structure. This would make little sense grammatically if it did not mean that one be reconstruct a part of the whole, a part of or the whole existing structure within the footprint of the existing structure as it sits on the lot. Otherwise, the phrase "as it sits on the lot" is meaningless. It does not mean that because a part of the whole reconstructed structure happens to be within the existing footprint, it should reconstruct to mean that there was a partial portion of the existing structure being rebuilt within the existing footprint that satisfied the requirement of within as it sits on the lot. They are rebuilding the whole existing structure, not just a part of it. Therefore, the whole must be rebuilt within the existing footprint, not just a part of it. Therefore, the whole must be rebuilt within existing footprint as it sits on the lot. They are rebuilding the whole and not a part. A part would have to be as it sits on the lot. They are not, they are not reconstructing the whole existing structure as it sits on the lot. They are building a new structure and not the way the existing structure sits on the lot. They are creating a new nonconforming structure. They are not extending the existing structure. They cannot because they are raising. They are not altering the existing structure. They cannot because they are demolishing it. They are not structurally changing the existing structure. They cannot because they are demolishing it. They are not reconstructing a nonconforming structure. They are not extending nor altering nor changing the nonconforming structure. They are building a new nonconforming structure in a different location outside of the existing footprint in a manner not consistent with the way the structure sits on the lot. Without going into a whole bunch of cases, which frankly aren't all that helpful, the general rule of interpreting bylaws is to give the words their plain meaning. And I'll skip over the quote from the case because we all make mistakes. Mainly, you have to try, what was the intent of the town meeting? Well, I don't know what the intent of the town meeting was, but to interpret the language of the definition of reconstruct to mean that only a small portion of a structure reconstructed, being reconstructed, has to be within the footprint of the existing structure is torturing the language if they are building a new structure and not reconstructing the existing structure within the existing footprint as it sits on the lot. For foregoing reasons, the appeal should be granted if the other party chooses to continue with a proposed plan as it is, according to zoning bylaw and application for a variance, which was originally deemed to be required by the Building Inspector 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Angley. Well read.
Pardon?
Well read.
Thank you. I don't know how well-written it was, but it was well-read. I'm just chilling.
Lisa, do you want to say anything?
Um, I just, I just would like to reiterate what he said, and I think he broke down the definition quite well in separating out the definition of demolishing and raising versus new and put that more into perspective than the previous meeting. So I think it's a lot clearer on that.
Okay. I observed that there's another gentleman in the back who is dressed like I am, so I'm thinking that you may be representing opposing interests. Am I correct?
Uh, yes.
What is your name?
Anthony Riley.
And Mr. Riley, are you the author of a letter dated April 25, 2019, over the letterhead of Galvin in Galvin?
That's correct.
And please identify who you represent.
I represent Jeff Merritt, permit holder, and the owner of 14 Andrews Point Road.
So you are seeking, or you are advocating on behalf of construction on the subject site?
Correct.
Mr. Angley is on behalf of the trust, obviously, looking to suppress that construction. So having said that, for the record and for those at home, again, please identify yourself and give us a short summary of your position with regard to this case and the feelings of your clients.
All right. So again, my name is Anthony Riley. I'm from Galvin in Galvin, PC in Duxbury. I represent Jeff Merritt, the permit holder, and the owner of 14 Andrews Point Road. So I think I'll start with the definition of reconstruction in the bylaw. It states reconstruction is the rebuilding within the existing footprint of the existing structure, part of or the whole existing structure as it sits on the lot.
What's your citation? Can I interrupt you?
I'm sorry. Article 6 of the bylaw is quoted in Mr. Angley's memo he just passed out on page two.
2253A.
No, I think it went to Article, sorry.
Is that where you're looking, 2253A?
Please, Mr. Angley cites 2253 and Mr. Riley cites 2254.
Okay.
I have a book.
Go ahead.
So I think what's important is the part that says "part of." You can rebuild within the existing footprint of the existing structure, part of or the whole existing structure. And that's what Mr. Merritt's plan showed, that the proposed new two-bedroom building is partly within the footprint of the existing structure. And further, the appeals court supports the idea that reconstruction means that you can reconstruct a nonconforming building at a different site than the exact location of the previous nonconforming building.
So long as part of it is in the same footprint?
Part of is within the same footprint of the existing nonconforming building. And the definition in the bylaw includes "part of."
Okay. So you're not suggesting that a new structure could be built outside of the original footprint? You're suggesting that so long as a part of the new structure is within the existing footprint or the footprint of the former structure, you're good?
That's correct. And then further, because the new building is lessening the nonconformities from the existing building, the building permit is, would be issued by right. There was a case that the SJC decided in February of this year that commented on the law regarding nonconforming structures, and it mentioned something they called the Willard Test.
What's your citation for the SJC case?
It's Bellata v. Brookline ZBA, 481 Mass., 372, and then the section I'm referring to is on pages 380 and 381.
Mr. Riley, can you give that to me again?
Sure.
41, Mass., what?
481, Mass., 372. And then the section I'm referring to is on page 380 to 81.
And it's a 2019 case?
Yes, February of this year.
And your page reference again?
380 to 381.
Thank you.
And they discuss what they refer to as the Willard Test, which states that the first inquiry by the building commissioner should be to determine whether the proposed alteration increases the nonconforming structure. If the answer is yes, then you ask whether the new structure is substantially more detrimental to the area than the original building. But if the answer is no, then you're entitled to a building permit. I think in this case, there's no dispute that the, that the proposed building is less nonconforming than the existing building. And that plus that part of its footprint is within the old building, that the building commissioner was correct and issued the building permit as Mr. Merritt was entitled to receive. I don't have anything to add.
You have clients with you tonight?
Yeah, yes. Mr. Merritt?
Mr. Merritt, I recognize your face. It's a nice face. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
And also Joseph Bazanotti here with me as all com owners of 14 Andrews Point Road, and nothing to add.
Mr. Bazanotti, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Members of the board, beginning with Mr. Germain.
Not yet.
Okay. Ms. Clark.
I don't believe we've ever seen plans. Do we need to see them?
Yeah, we did.
That's what I had just asked, if we had plans, and you said no. So that's why I haven't.
I mean, we don't have.
We did have plans back.
We did, but I mean, I don't even, if those were preliminary or what was based on, do we have plans that were turned into the building inspector?
Do you have a plan here if you'd like to see it?
That would be great. That'd be a good start.
Find this letter. It's attached.
It's attached, right?
It's attached.
Sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Angley, would you like to approach? Mr. Angley, would you like to come and see this?
Um, can you show me?
I've looked at a minute, you gentlemen. All right.
Interesting. Can you show me the corner that you're keeping?
This is, this is the existing porch.
Oh, okay.
This is the new porch. So the piece that overlaps is from that corner right there. This is up in here.
So this...
Yep, that dotted line, yep.
Is where it overlaps.
Mm-hmm.
So the solid line is the new structure.
Yes.
And this is the old structure.
Correct.
So this corner, the foundation is what you're keeping.
Yep, all these dotted lines inside of this line, the back, that's where it overlaps.
Okay.
And this, this porch area as well.
So this is the one.
Maybe that should be shown. I'm about to do it.
We've seen it. Yep. And these are the plans that went to the building commissioner?
They are. So in there, I think they're also a matter of record. I think we've had these plans back and forth between the groups a number of times.
Okay.
That was the latest one I had. Nothing has changed from that.
Nothing changed.
Other than the setback distances were put on one of the plans, and again, that's a matter of record.
27 feet.
So they, it was drawn, just, but everything stayed the same.
It's drawn, yeah.
But they...
You guys go down here.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm sorry, Stephen. Mr. Mueller.
Nothing yet.
Ms. Mello.
No.
Mr. Germain. Ms. Clark.
Ma'am.
Well, I'm still digesting these diverse interpretations of the exact same thing, which happens when we bring lawyers into work. So I'm still thinking. Mr. Chairman?
While Ms. Clark is thinking, I observe that there are a number of other folks here in the audience who have an interest in this case, and I open the floor to them. Would anybody like to be heard, either pro or con, with regard to this appeal of the building commissioner's decision to issue the building permit at this location?
I'm Mark Bennett. I'll speak for my wife and I.
And Mark, you reside where?
At 22 Lakeview Street. We have a piece of property that abuts the property in question as well.
I remember you, Mark.
On your side. Okay. We are not part of the suit, but we support it to stop the building of this house because it changes everything that's small, but a piece of land.
It changes, if I remember correctly, your position from the former hearing on the case, you suggested it changes the character of the neighborhood.
The neighborhood, because it's a low-set house, very much behind fences and vegetation. And what we're going to end up is three stories high, overlooking both of our properties on the property line. And when they talk about existing setbacks, part of what they're using is that setback is the deck that was built behind a fence 15 years ago. They're using the edge of that deck, which was hidden behind a fence for 15 years. It is four feet off the property line. So therefore, why is an illegal, nonpermitted deck being used to create that setback of only four feet when it should have been 25 feet to the house of when the house was constructed? The deck was put up after they put a fence on, and they built the deck behind the fence. And now they're using that four-foot offset to my property line as part of an existing setback. That seems very unfair to not even know that they had done that, and then to find out that the house is going to sit right on our property line or pretty close to it because of that unauthorized, nonpermitted deck.
Would anyone else like to be heard?
Can I ask a question? How big was that deck again?
Well, that deck is about 18 feet wide and 19 feet long from the edge of the house. So if that deck wasn't there, and originally it was a small little deck, that was very small in size as it stopped down to the beach.
Finish your thought. If that deck were not there, what?
We would be 25 feet from my property line. So then, in order to stay within, what he's trying to do, he couldn't worsen that by getting closer than 25 feet. But he's coming right up to my property line, 12 feet off my, and he's going up 30 feet.
Is this a 15-foot here? That 15-foot?
Yes, that's what his plan says, is he beat, he beat off of it. He's currently four because that deck, if you count it.
Well, their argument is that they're increasing the setbacks.
Well, they're increasing it, but they're, but...
They're getting closer to you.
Now, if you take the illegal deck out of it, then the setback was like 25 feet, and now you're dropping it to 15.
And there was no, I think we determined at the last hearing on this, there was no permit for that deck.
But... Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If it was more than 10 years old, if there's a tacit approval that...
Is it, is it in the law? Hmm? Is it in the law? Is it, how would we get a more formal opinion on that? Tacit approval versus, you know, tacit approval is just someone's opinion.
The rule that they generally go with is that if no one complained about it for 10 years and the town knew about it and taxed it as an additional structure on the property for 10 years or more, then it's considered grandfathered in.
But it was hidden behind a fence.
That's not what I said. The assessors go, the assessors go in front of a fence. The fact that somebody walking by it couldn't see it doesn't mean that it wasn't built or taxed or acknowledged at some point.
What other members of the public would like to be heard on this? I don't see anybody raising their hand. I bounce it back to the members of the board. Does anybody have any additional thought, comment, or question they'd like to make?
I haven't been to the site, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Neither have we.
Yeah, we have not either.
We never do the site survey. No, we didn't either.
How big, how tall is the existing house? It's only one story? And the proposed building is, what's the elevation?
So it goes to two floors of a part of the house. There's a, there's a bedroom on a second level.
But there's a walkout basement, so we really, is the, is the second floor really the third floor? Is there a walkout basement or is there a basement?
It's a walkout basement. The first floor is ground level, and then over 10 feet of the foundation width, 10 feet of that, 14 feet, 14 feet of that is actually the bedroom upstairs. But I would like to say that, you know, I know we're talking about the fence and the deck, and I just don't forget that it is four feet from the existing line. We've already turned through past meetings that that was a grandfathered deck. That is a existing setback, but don't forget, we are approving that to the setbacks that you folks just talked about.
I'm still talking about elevations.
So the increased setback is getting further away from the property.
Mr. Germain makes a good point. He's talking about elevation.
I'm still talking about elevations, not about decks. So we're bringing the house closer to the street, farther from the pond.
Yes.
And unless I don't know how to read a plan here, it looks to me like the house is going to sit more centered on the lot as opposed to sticking it over in the far corner where it sits now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is the existing deck, as you're looking at this plan, if you stood in the street and looked at the house, is the existing deck on the right-hand side? Is that where we're picking up this four feet?
So...
Or is that over here? This is the deck?
So this is, this is the existing deck here.
Okay. So this is where we're referring to it?
That's a four-foot mark. And this is the new deck here, more on the back of the house, or front of the house. Apparently, look at it right front of the house, more across the back here. So the distance now from the property line that we're talking about is now 15 feet instead of the four that is existing.
In all fairness to the chairman and to the petitioners, I do recall, I did not do the site visit, but I do recall this when it came before conservation, and, because I sit there too. And Conservation took it from the angle of farther away from the pond, and they issued, they issued their okay for its construction.
I want to ask you for the record, Mr. Germain, whether your participation as a member of the Conservation Commission, and a good one at that, has any effect on your ability to be impartial as you listen to the merits of this case?
No, sir.
Everybody okay with that disclosure? Yes?
Yep.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Okay. I have a couple things I want to say, but again, I ask the other board members if they have anything further that they'd like to offer.
Is the house currently occupied? It is.
Before I say anything, I observed that Mr. Angley had his right hand in the air a moment ago.
I did.
And I gave Mr. Riley a brief opportunity to respond, and then I'll speak for a minute or two, and then we'll decide as a board what we're going to do. This is not... This is not a case that is unfamiliar to us. We spent a considerable period of time on this case before, so we don't come to this case as, as folks who are not initiated as to the issues, both factual and legal in this case. So it's a well-developed matter for us. Having said that, Mr. Angley, what would you like to add?
I have three things. Number one, the case that was referenced from the SJC, unless I can read the bylaw of the town and their definitions, I don't know how applicable it is. I just make that observation. Secondly, if you look at your definitions in the bylaw, reconstruction, rebuilding within the existing footprint of the existing structure, some may call it part of or the whole existing structure, as it sits on the lot. So my points are that they may have a little bit of a sitting within the existing structure, but it's not as it sits on the lot.
Within the existing footprint, I mean. Not within the existing structure, within the existing footprint.
It's the footprint, I suppose.
Right.
And then...
But the whole thing does not sit on the lot. You're right.
Right.
And I understand your point.
And then I just make a, a brief point on the 10-year rule. That is so complicated. You read the case law on it. I don't know that there's anybody who can figure it out.
I'm going by what Carver has done.
But it's the best I can figure out what the courts have said is that if it was illegal to begin with, it stays illegal. But if it got up by accident, or the building department issued a permit improvinently, then 10 years is grandfathered.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Thank you for your courtesy.
Yes.
I'll just reiterate. The bylaw definition says part of, or the whole existing structure that sits on the lot...
What do you refer, oh...
Sorry, the definition of, the definition of reconstruction in the bylaw, that attorney Angley just referenced.
Yep.
The proposed building will rest on part of the, where the existing structure is, as it sits on the lot. And as far as the 10-year grandfathering for the deck goes, it's my understanding that it's been there for 10 years, it's grandfathered. Even so... That, that would be pursued through a request for an enforcement through the building commissioner, then you'd have to wait to see what the building commissioner said, and then that would be appealed to this board. So I don't think even the, whether, who, whether I'm correct or Mr. Angley's correct about the deck, that's not before you tonight. It's only based on, the appeal based on the setbacks? And other than that?
Well, it's appealed based upon the issuance of the building permit.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, and thank both members of the bar tonight for their arguments. This issue of reconstruction, and whether it is required, whether the definition is satisfied by requiring that the entire new structure be built on the existing permit, was addressed by town council previously. We farmed that out, even though we had our own opinions here. And that opinion came back suggesting that any part of a new structure, so long as it is within, within at least part of the existing footprint, satisfies the definition. I think I'm representing that correct via my memory. Now, lawyers famously disagree. And I'm the first one to tell you that I have not always agreed with the opinion of town council. But the argument that both of you have focused on tonight was exactly the same argument that our town council focused on. And it was based on that argument at the time, and based on the fact that the new structure was going to increase the setbacks. That we eventually decided as a board that no relief was required. Again, am I representing this correctly? So I think I hear Mr. Jermaine, who is new to us, but has raised some very cogent points this evening, suggests that maybe he would like to take a look at the site.
It'd be up to the, to the, to the board.
Our, our practice is that if one of us wants to go, then we all go. So I leave it to you to sort of make that decision for us, and anyone else who feels that they need to walk out there.
I, I disagree on the sidewalk. I, I feel that the sidewalk would be overextending our bounds of what we're here to determine. You can make an argument that it doesn't, and I'm happy to hear that. I, I just feel that we don't need to go to the site, because then we're, we're now involved in determining other aspects that are not in front of us.
Meaning the deck?
The, the argument of the deck, or where the corner of the house is, that was all determined by the building commissioner, and our job here is to determine whether the building commissioner correctly interpreted the bylaw, not anything on the ground. I mean, that was, I mean, it's a little bit of a nuance in the definition, but that's kind of where I sit.
Anyone else have any opinion on walking the site or leaving it be, based on the information that came to the board previously, and the information before the board tonight, and what it is that we are supposed to be doing, which is reviewing the issuance of the building permit?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I made a point that I hadn't seen the site, only because from a conservation standpoint, I know CONCON went out there. I didn't need to see it.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I'm okay with, with, I agree with Sharon. I don't think we need to go out there and see it.
We didn't, as a board, went out and saw it when it was before, it's the four.
Okay. Mike, I'm sorry, May.
Please.
I always thought that, that non-conforming, you, you had to maintain at least the footprint, and so maybe I'm way off base on that, but this is like, when the house gets torn down, and we have what amounts to a vacant lot, we start all over again with a brand-new house on a lot that is, you know, grandfathered from the days of, how old's the existing house that's sitting there now? I mean, that was always my, I think we're trying to thread a needle here, but that's just my personal two cents.
I had one other thing that I wanted to mention, and then we'll address what we're going to be doing as a board this evening. I recall vividly discussing with both sides to this dispute, the possibility of getting together and trying to work out an amicable arrangement, so that we as a board were not compelled to make a decision that would make one side very unhappy. And I remember suggesting that very strongly. I recall as well telling everybody that I understood the passion on both sides, particularly of the neighbors who've been there for so many years. But we also have a landowner there, who, to a certain extent, has rights in that land to develop it as he sees fit, within certain parameters. Now, I don't know where those discussions went. And it may be that the parties to this dispute are spoiling for an appeal and are prepared to go to court over this. I know as an attorney that I discourage my clients from going to court on cases. Bad things can happen in court. And usually, one side, as I said before, ends up very unhappy. Your attorneys as well lose control of the case when they go to court. They're not making the decisions anymore. Someone is making the decisions for you, judge or jury. So it's a big roll of the dice if you can't get together and have a meeting of the minds. Now, having said that, we have received tonight a well-read memo from Mr. Angley, and from Mr. Riley, an SJC citation, which appears to be pertinent, based upon his representations this evening. And I think it probably would be a good idea to continue this case until our next meeting, so that the board can fully digest the arguments of both sides, from both attorneys. And then we can come back at our next meeting, which will be soon, I assure you, probably within 30 days, and we'll arrive at a decision, unless in the meantime, folks can get together and maybe work out some sort of meeting of the minds, as I said, that will not enrich these attorneys any more than they already are. We're always happy to listen to the folks who feel as if they may have an arrangement that they can agree to. So again, I would encourage Mr. Angley and Mr. Riley to have that conversation with their respective clients, and then with each other.
I agree. I, I'd like to continue it, just so we can read these thoroughly, review the original opinion from council, and actually, probably review the building permit.
Can we also find out how long through the assessors' records that the deck has been taxed?
It's, with all due respect, outside the scope of what we need to be doing on this particular case. We can certainly take a look at that, but it's not dispositive of any legal issue that's before us at the present time, in my opinion. Does anybody agree or disagree with that?
I agree.
Mr. Mueller, who's been quiet?
Yeah. The deck has no impact.
So, Ms. Mello, if you'd like to take a look at that, certainly supportive of that, and you can advise the board as to your findings when we meet next on this.
Yep.
But it's not going to make a decision, it's not going to affect our decision as to the appropriateness of the issuance of the building permit, one way or the other.
Do you want to look at dates?
Yes, let's look at dates, because we have a new case coming in that we have to schedule as well, so we, we need to find some time.
How do you want, how does June 18th look for everyone? Do you know if the, the case has been advertised?
It has not.
It has not.
So that should give us plenty of time to do that.
That should give us...
Mr. Mueller?
Good.
Yep.
Mello?
DQ.
Intrepid clerk. You good?
Good.
So June 18th?
June 18th. Mr. Angley, June 18th? Mr. Riley?
June 18th is open. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to make a brief, I guess, objection.
Word, okay. But I'll hear you in a moment, but we want to get this date established. June 18th? First case out. Be here on time.
Is your objection concerning the continuance of this?
It is. I'd like to at least state it on the record.
On the record, then, with an opportunity for Mr. Angley to respond.
We would respectfully object, and do object to the continuance.
On what basis?
That generally, boards need to act within 100 days. I understand in this circumstance, the trust is, would be considered the applicant. And so as long as the trust agrees and the board agrees, this matter is going to be continued. But I would just respectfully remind the board that it's our position that you have enough information in front of you to make this determination tonight, and further, that this permit was issued back in November, and now it's May, and it's going to be June. And while we understand the concerns of the neighbors, as the chair previously stated, Mr. Merritt is also a property owner in town, has a building permit, and it'll be seven months by the time he gets in the next hearing, and is still uncertain. So the basis, that's the basis of my objection then. It's our, it's our opinion that the law says what the law said, and it's been months and months and months of continuances on this project, and they would like to get going.
Well, not, I'm sorry, not from us, if you had months and months of continuances. This is the first time we've heard the appeal of the issuance of the building permit in this case. First night. Ms. Clark?
Along those lines, the, the night we opened the hearing, there was a request by, I believe...
The applicant?
Not the applicant, but Mr. Merritt, because the original attorney was ill. The second, the second time we opened the ca, or went to hear the case, there was a request by the applicant, because we only had four members present. Again, that, that kind of closes down the ticking time clock. And as far as the permit having been issued in 11 months, there's a statutory time for which they can appeal. I assume they met that. And then after that, it has to be, you know, advertised and get on our docket, and it's been on our docket for three months. So the 100 days, while, of course, I agree with it, I don't think it necessarily applies here, because it's not by the absence of this board that we have not been able to hear the case.
And that's okay. I'm not blaming the board.
I'm glad you're not.
Well, I'm not. And I hope it didn't come across that way.
But it, but as far as the continuance, we have two learned attorneys hand us entirely different opinions to the same exact wording, and four of us are not of this profession. So in order to get this right, give me time to read it. I assure you, I can read it and digest it, and we will schedule the new, next hearing. I understand that Mr. Merritt is, wants to put a shovel in the ground, but this is a process. This is a right of the, the abutters to do this, and it's the right of our board to get it right.
Mr. Angley, I don't think you want to respond to this, do you?
I have no objection. I will make one statement. I would have spoken with the other side, but Attorney Sirphy was ill. And I still, to this day, he still is not in his office, and he was, he's a good friend, and I'm concerned. I didn't learn until last week that it had referred to Attorney Galvin's office. So I'm quite prepared to talk.
That's great. And I would, using the chair as a bully pulpit, as I sometimes do, again, I would encourage both attorneys, who seem like reasonable people to me, to have this conversation with both their clients and with each other. Because if it goes to us on the merits, as I said before, we'll have to call it, one way or the other, and one side is not going to be happy, and the other side is going to be happy, but probably not for very long, because the losing side will most likely appeal to the Superior Court. And so this will go on, at the cost of considerable amount of money, I would expect, and time, and time. All right. Do I hear a motion to continue the case to June 20?
So moved.
No, June...
June 18. I'm sorry. Long day for me. Who made the motion?
Alan.
Mr. Jermaine?
Second.
Second by Ms. Clark. All in favor to continue this case to June 18th?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. It's unanimous. We will reconvene on June 18. Good luck with your discussions, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Attorney Gray. Thank you. Courtesy?
Thank you. Yes?
Is that the next one?
Yeah, I am. Got to save my homework.
Anybody need a break?
I'm going to speak.
You know, he starts right off, doesn't he? This could not be good. Yes, we will.
I did not get that. What's Benati's first name?
The gentleman sitting next to Jeff Merritt, I just didn't get it.
I think it's Robert?
No, Mark. 22 Lakeview.
Oh, no. He was talking about the other...
No, he's talking about the one in the back. Sean, I think you're right, it's Robert.
Oh, I don't.
I think it's Robert. Okay. So let's move on to the next case, public hearing case number 41-4. Thank you, folks, for being patient with us. The petitioner is Vittorio M. Arriano Jr. requesting a variance pursuant to Sections 5222 and 2300 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 1-7 Commerce Way in Carver. Assessors map 21 lot 2-2. Seeking a variance from rear and side setbacks to install a 42-by-65 storage building in the industrial C district. I observe that we have a plan, and I observe that we have the petitioner with us as well, and next to you, to your immediate left...
My youngest son Cole and my oldest daughter, Allison.
Cole and Ellen, nice to see you both. I'm glad that you're here. And Mr. Arriano, the floor is yours. What would you like to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. By their approach, I'd like to hand out a few other color maps that might aid the understanding of the site.
You might say, for the record, that this is actually a continued hearing. There was a request from the petitioner the last time, when we were in session April 30, to continue the matter until we had a full board of five. At that time, we only had a full board of four. So I opened the hearing, and we then immediately took a vote to continue to tonight. So this is actually the second date for public hearing. The first date, no testimony or evidence was offered because it immediately went to the continuance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for the record, Vittorio Arriano, known as Buzz Arriano, local here in town. I own the property here at 6 Commerce Way. I apologize, Mr. Sirki, as Mr. Angley stated earlier, has been out of his office for some time, and he's unable to attend tonight, so I'm going to attempt this on my own. Quite frankly, he's been representing me for a long time, and it's hard to find the next guy.
So if you're in contact with him at all, or his office, please pass on best wishes from the board.
Please, I will, thank you.
Proceed.
So just a little history, and I've handed out this paper. So I purchased the original property in 2006, a vacant piece of land. First building was built in 2000, late 2006, and the last building was constructed in 2016. There's a total of seven buildings on the lot. Many local businesses call the property home. There's about 75 people that work in the park, which is good for the local economy. We have a large tax payment, which I've handed out the money to show that we don't demand a lot of services and we pay a lot of taxes. The reason for my proposed building is, as many of you know, I own a local company called New Buildex. We perform fire and water damage repair, emergency services, and we use a lot of specialized equipment. Compressors, generators, dehumidifiers, fans, some specialized equipment that I've had designed and constructed. And my warehouse that's attached to my office has become too small, and I'd like to, I have some stuff in Conex boxes now outside, which is very inconvenient, and it's also hot in my equipment, and I'd like to get it inside. I'm out of room on the existing parcel. Per the zoning bylaws, states I need 40 feet to the side and 40 feet to the rear, which I do not have, based on the lot.
What do you have?
If you look at, may I approach?
Yep.
So if you look at the colored map, this is the original parcel that was actually bisected by Route 44, used to extend over...
To the other side.
To the other side. So Route 44 came through, there was a taking, and that's how the shape ended up being what it is. So I'd like to...
So how many feet do you need on each dimension?
So the rear, I need 32 feet, and on the side, I need approximately 10.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Is this a leaching field?
It is. And so I have 11 feet to that, and 10 feet is per side of five. And that was a constraining factor, the location of the leaching field. I have a letter enclosed that I've attached, that you had in the original application from the director of butter, which is dated March 15, 2019, from LMC Realty Trust, also known as SLT Construction. Mr. Obchinsky has signed the letter, and basically saying he has no objections to my petition for the location of the building. There is, obviously, the only abutter there is the highway and SLT. I don't see as a...
You got Norwell sand and gravel on either side, too, right?
So this side is Thomas Brothers, where they do the excavation, and they run a small screening plant there. This is my parcel here, with the proposed builders, and this is SLT Construction.
Where's Norwell sand and gravel?
That's here. That's where they used to be. This is the old plant from many years ago. I just wanted to show the 44 going through.
So this parcel over here, the LMC, that's Obchinsky?
Correct.
And Crop Production Services, who's that?
That is a piece of land that was sold by SLT to Agway, who then sold to draw out a permit for a building there for a fertilizer storage building, and they never constructed it.
So that's a vacant lot at this time?
And then across the street is the old construction landfill that's now a solar field. And then immediately here is...
Well, there's a cell tower over there, too, right?
Yeah, the cell tower's right there. And then that's Precast Company.
What else do you have, Mr. Arriano?
That is it from my handouts.
Cole, you want to tell us anything? Like, how old are you?
11.
Wow.
You know, everybody in town sees this.
He was dancing for the camera before he...
As long as he knows.
And Fran said that he would put it on as the intro to get people interested in watching your meeting.
I'll take that.
Listen, we have an opening for a alternate.
Mr. Arriano, can you just come up here and answer us a couple of questions? First off, what's the construction of the building?
So it's similar to what I have there on site now. It's a Morton building, one-story, commercial, steel frame, steel roof.
Just a big storage space?
Yep, one garage door, one entrance door. Same color, same color scheme, brick facade along the bottom, just like the buildings I have down.
And what is there now? What is all...
So there's a couple of Conex boxes here in this photograph, and there's a small cement enclosure, you know, three-sided for salt for winter. Yep, and then there's some spare building materials.
So all that get cleaned up?
That'll all get cleaned out, and there's a group of Conex boxes right there. Steel 20-foot-by-8-foot storage boxes that you see, they say Eagle Leasing on a lot of them. Yeah. Yeah, contained.
And you said this is a leaching field, right?
It is, yeah. And that services this parcel here.
So you can't get, you actually can't conform because of the subject? You could, I mean, if you could move this building over here, that would be...
Well, I think I'd be too close to this building at that point, too. I need 30 feet between the building and the fire alarm. No, no, just heat and electric, no bathroom.
Is there like a sprinkler system?
No, it's under the requirement of the sprinklers.
How tall?
The ridge is 30 feet. It's the same size height as the existing building.
We don't have a picture of what you want to put up, do you?
You know, I'm embarrassed to say that I was sitting here in your previous hearing thinking it would be helpful if he had a building permit planned, and then I realized that I didn't bring a picture, so I falsely assumed that everyone has driven by my sign on the highway and has seen my buildings.
Like, I've never been down to 44, so...
You don't have to ask. Go ahead.
In full disclosure, I contract service work for SLT, but your name did come up, and this letter is accurate. Peter and Mike Obchinsky have absolutely no problem with this whatsoever for Mr. Arriano.
Let me go through my, what we call a colloquy. When you say you, you say contract or subcontract?
I subcontracted them, I hauled material for them.
For them, for your current employer?
Yeah, I am my current employer.
So you're self-employed?
Yes, sir.
So you make money as a result of activities that you have with the petitioner's business?
Via butter.
Via butter's business. Do you feel, based upon that connection, that you can render a fair, impartial, and unbiased decision in this case?
Yes.
The rest of the board, any objections to Mr. Jermaine sitting on this case?
No.
Thank you for that disclosure.
This makes it easy.
All right. Does any member of the board have any further questions?
I am very familiar with what you're trying to build over there, so I've been in your park, I've seen what you've got, and I know exactly what you're trying to do, I know what's in that back corner, so...
So, Mr. Arriano, this is your, the yellow line is your property line, right? So you don't need to take down any of these feet?
Correct.
This belongs to the...
Yeah, everything on this side of the yellow line is a highway layout.
Is a highway layout, so none of those...
Yeah, so that, see that line right there?
Yep.
That's, there's a fence along the highway right there. That's right there.
What did we say these other structures were that invade the footprint that you've marked by way of a red rectangle?
Yep, so there's a...
Yeah, he's got the bigger...
Yeah, if I may, just point to this map for you.
Go ahead.
So this is, when this was taken, these are two Conex boxes here, storage boxes, that's actually a boat.
Where are they going?
So these are gone now already, the boat's gone. This is a salt bin that will relocate. These boxes will be removed, and these two boxes will be removed in this corner I can clean up. Once I can get, these are all full of equipment that I use.
If we decide to do something here, we're going to have to clean this corner up a little bit.
Well, that's why I'm here.
You're going to have to, because what you want to do is not going to fit in there unless you move that stuff out.
No, it's all going away, and that can be conditioned on the permit, that's no problem. There's three boxes there, and they're all full of equipment that I want to get inside because unfortunately, the boxes are steel and they condensate, and the equipment starts to rust.
Okay, so what's going to happen with the boxes once you get the equipment into the proposed garage?
I have them sold already.
And these, these over here, you're going to be getting rid of this stuff, or is that already gone?
No, this is, that's a trailer. That's a vehicle that's gone already. That's some additional building material that's gone already. These one, two, three, four, five boxes here, these will be leaving also. This is all stuff that needs to go in the building.
Where's the trailer going to go?
It'll go right back here.
And what's this?
That is the leaching field. See the perimeter of it right there?
What about over here?
That's, again, that's two boxes that left already, and that's a dumpster, and that's a boat.
And the boat is still there, or is that gone?
Boat's gone. The dumpster will still be out here, it'll be in a different spot apart from the dumpster here. And this trailer is something, is an equipment trailer we move around.
All right, so for purposes of direction, Mr. Arriano, if we move what's left in that crowded corner over to this location that you've been pointing to, is that going towards the north? Northwest?
Northwest.
Would that be fair?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Arriano?
It says for stores for rebuildments. For equipment and...
Specialized equipment.
Building stuff.
No, it's really just specialized generators, desiccant, dehumidifiers, fans, solar blasting equipment. It's all specialized stuff that we don't use all the time, but when, for instance, we just were at the Hingham High School where they had the fire. So we responded, pulled a lot of stuff out of the Conex boxes, went up there and started with it. And once we're done there, it'll come back and mace it for two weeks or two months.
And this is to store all that?
So you're not going to have plumbing in there, right? You're going to have a second floor in there, or no?
No, one big open space.
And electricity?
Electricity and heat. Propane.
Okay. We have to perform, whenever there's a request for dimensional variances, an analysis under state law, and that's just General Laws, Chapter 48. And what that says, basically, is that we have to determine as a board whether there's something distinctive and unusual about the property that would allow us cover to break the Town of Carver's law, namely the bylaw. And what we're talking about is any one or more of three different things. One is the shape of the lot, one is the topography of the lot, and one is the...
Soil.
The soil of the lot. She's right with it.
Thought this was a test.
So I want to hear you, Mr. Arriano, make the argument that one or more of those three things applies to you, that if you're not allowed to do this, you would be put under a hardship. Go.
So I appreciate the opportunity, and I did think about this, I've obviously been before this board many times over the years, and this is clearly a hardship issue due to shape. And my argument would be that the shape of the lot was determined when the highway was taken. Taking of the highway area created a funny shape on the lot, and created a long skinny triangle in the back that is, in the development of the property, having to put a septic and all the other things that went on, left me very little room in the rear.
So your argument is shape. What about soil?
Soils there are very consistent.
No, you're not grasping my point. You've got a leaching field right here, so if you move this back, you're going to be on top of the leaching field.
That is correct.
So maybe you have two of the three categories that would be applicable in this situation.
We consider it a substantial financial hardship to move a leaching field in order to conform, so we kind of lump that in the soil conditions.
Now, these are all your buildings here?
They are.
Is there anywhere else on this lot that you could put it?
I'm out of room. If we look at the survey of plan and the stamp that was supplied, you can see that from a dimensional area, I don't have any room.
This is all a drainage easement up front here?
Yes.
So you can't use them?
And I wouldn't have room. I'd be right back with a setback issue down here, and I figured...
Yeah, wherever you go, you're going to have a setback issue, it looks like. You're not going to be able to fit in the proposed construction anywhere here unless you get relief.
That is correct.
Excuse me, and you've got a triangular shape on the far side, on the opposite side of the lot as well?
Yes.
Over here.
And which is your actual New Buildex office? It's over here. And who is this?
That is, these two buildings are a company called Plymouth Grading. They make specialized glass that ships all around the world.
But you own all the land?
I do, and all of them.
Mr. Jermaine, do you have anything further?
I'm good.
Ms. Mel?
I'm fine.
Mr. Mueller?
I'm good.
So you need 32 feet on the rear and 9 and 1/2 on the side?
32 and 10?
Yeah.
32 and 10 to do what you want to do. Okay. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion...